Good evening. At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our May Regular Board Meeting. So at this time, we'll have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So a moment of silence, please.
When the allegiance is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you. Can you make a signature? This time, our mission states that, if you had time, Mr. Ellis.
Cherokee County Board Education Mission is for every student to graduate from high school and be globally competitive for work, post-secondary education, and prepare for life in the 21st century.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. You have the agenda before you. Are there any modifications that need to be made to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, the agenda stands. You also have the minutes from April's meeting. Are there any modifications or corrections that need to be made to those meeting minutes? All right, hearing none, those minutes stand. All right, that leads us to public comment. Mr. Chapman, do we have anybody for public comment?
Uh, Madam Chair, no one has signed up.
Okay, all right. All right, now at this time, I'm gonna yield the floor to Dr. Woody.
Thank you. Tonight, it's a privilege to recognize our different people of the year. We have support staff, we have our teachers of the year, and we have our principal of the year. I do want to say, without you, we cannot be successful in Cherokee County. You are an essential part of everything that's done, and that's why our students can be successful, it's because of you. So, we're going to give you a certificate tonight. Appreciation and thanks. I'm gonna get Ms. Raper and Mr. Coleman to come up and help me as I pass those out. And if you'll stay up here, and if you come by, we'll hand you your certificate, and then if you'll just stay up here, and if you two just wanna come on up, we'll just, I'll just be up here, and we'll get Mr. Ellis. So if you two want to, feel free to come on. We'll get Mr. Ellis, too. If we get you to stay up here with us, we'll just, we'll start with Sandy Salisbury. If they're not here, just let me know, and we'll move right on. Larissa Doolittle. Maggie Clayton. Betty Jean Jones. Lisa Graves. Teresa Deals. Amanda Killian. Amanda Killian. Pam Cheeks. Carrie Garnet. Garrett. Melanie Curtis. Cindy Gibson. Judy Brazil. And the District Staff Support of the Year is Lena Yant, and she let me know that she had already a commitment before tonight, so if you would give them one more hand. While they're sitting down, I forgot to mention that I did want to thank, we had a committee that came in, and that committee reviewed these different, I guess we'll say applicants, and I think they did a great job choosing the District of the Year person. So now, we'll begin with our teachers. Jessica Rock. Joshua Swarting. April Harper. Wendy Brier. Cynthia Postale. Brian Hoyt. Joel Thorley. Uh, let's see. Tamitha Sellers. Von Flavermilk. Hannah Berry. Sonia Crouch. Chris Crichton. And the District Teacher of the Year was Jenny Cable. Thank you. And our final presentation would be the Miss for the Year, and that will be Patricia Matthews.
Please present us your superintendent's report.
Okay. Within your packet, you have some facilities information. The first thing is dealing with working with the county. They're wanting to do a grant to install a generator at Hawassee Dam that will be hooked to the well there. This will help in providing water in the event of emergency to the fire department, as well as the community center. The next thing is, and the next group of things is just standard contracts that we do, and I won't read through all of those, but then we'll go over the ones that we're asking for about capital projects half-sent. One will be rental of the chiller at Hawassee Dam. That chiller is, the new chiller is to be installed in October. It's supposed to be in. The other, next item, too, is the, for the new HVAC system here, you can feel probably a difference in the temperature from last month, as the HVAC was out here. Next will be the Engineering and Project Administration for reconditioning the Hawassee Dam water tank. You also have, actually, the reconditioning of the water tank. And then, the last item would be the parking lot at Andrews High School. We're going to, it's going to be paved, and then the other part of it is going to be resealed. You have your personnel report within your packet. You also have, within your packet, just a reminder for you, the graduation dates that are coming up, they'll be in about, again, two weeks from tonight, that you can see there. And I believe the first one is at the Shepherd of the Mountain Church, so that will be beginning for the Oaks Academy there. And then the last thing on my report that I want to mention is, I did just want to mention to you that, as we're working through and finishing up the budget process, we did have the meeting last night, I did just want to remind you that we did lose a little bit over three hundred and eighty, or three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from our low wealth funding, and losing that, that wasn't in relationship to anything about the school system, it was just a change in the county and the values, a lot of different things. It's a very complicated formula, but I did just want to remind the board that we did actually lose that three hundred, little over three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of low wealth funding for the upcoming year. And that concludes my report. Only if I needed to.
All right, all right, no worries. Okay, so you've heard the superintendent's report as presented. Drive a motion in a second. Okay, motion by Mr. Coleman in a second. Okay, by Mr. Ellis. Mr. Coleman, any discussion? Mr. Ellis, any discussion?
No.
Fellow board members, discussion? Mr. Chapman, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Matthews, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Tatham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gaddis?
Aye.
Mr. Coleman? Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
All right, moving along, finance officers report. Ms. Haas, I'll yield the floor to you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four budget amendment requests. The first in our state public school fund, second in our federal programs fund, then our capital, and then grants donations and reimbursements. Driving your state public school fund, these are just some additional allotments that we received in our school tech fund. They do drop in some interest on those funds being separated from other funds, that's at the state level. They do give us that a couple of times throughout the year. The summer reading camp funds, we do receive about this time of year, as we're gearing up for summer programs. And then others in the state fund are just notable mentions, as you can see there. CTE, we discussed last month as a grant award that was provided to their program, and we have now received that funding, which is why it appears on your budget sheet. Federal programs fund, these are just realignments that are needed to be made as we're nearing the end of our fiscal year. We've been working with DPI, they've had quite a bit of trouble in their allotment section, and this is just us getting those budgets realigned to the programmatic things that we had asked for. Capital projects budget, that is the project request that Dr. Woody mentioned earlier, there for your approval. And then last, in the grants donations and reimbursements fund, this is just a realignment from where we had received the funds on the jewel lawsuit. We had originally budgeted them in school-based support services, but we were, we have learned that they would be more appropriate in alternative program services, per budget. Also included in your packets, you should have a copy of an amended policy agreement for PRC 071. This is that state supplemental pay for teachers. As we have near the end of the year, we are nearing our second payment, and we were able to add some additional dollars to that final payment, which we outlined in, in that document for your signature.
And that's all. Okay, you've heard the finance report. Do I have a motion in a second to approve this report? Okay, Mr. Coleman?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ellis? Uh, Mr. Coleman, any discussion? Mr. Ellis, any discussion?
No.
Fellow board members, discussion on this finance report? Mr. Chapman, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Tatham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Gaddis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda, board chair's report. So I left my information in the car, but I made several trips this past month since last board meeting, out to several school events, while very quickly just run through those. I had the privilege to actually attend, I tracked down the early college class last week, once for a spring performance by our School of Innovation students, Hollywood Hillbillies. Had a good time, it was a full house, I was glad to see that. Those students worked hard over the last five months, it was very evident, and they did a great job, I'm looking forward to future presentations from them. And then I returned on Friday to listen to a group presentation by students who, who traveled to Denmark and Rome over their spring break, and I really appreciated what those students had to say, how, how maybe some difficulties and obstacles that they overcame, some things that they're gonna take away, that they're gonna apply to their life, moving forward, and just, just the actual experience itself from leaving, leaving Murphy and going halfway across the world. What a great opportunity, and I look forward to a continued partnership with, with that school. I also attended the choral performance and the art show at Murphy Elementary, that was good to man, we've got some talented young artists in this county. It is absolutely astounding what Ms. Cable is able to do with all of those students. That entire hallway was lined with artwork, and it was so nice just to see what the children's perspective was on whatever element that she was teaching on, and how they applied it, and I very much enjoyed that. And, let's see, at the beginning of the month, we went to Murphy Elementary's 21st Century for a STEM grant that was awarded by the TDA in conjunction with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, and those kids have got access now to those opportunities in, in the STEM curriculum, that hopefully it will spur some interest, and they might consider a career with that. We certainly appreciate the partnership between Cal Ripken Senior Foundation and the TDA, and them awarding that grant to Murphy Elementary students. I went out to Andrews Middle School for a pep rally that they had for the end of the year, and I got to see artwork by their middle school students, which coincidentally was also featured in the Cherokee County Art Fest Council, and if I'm not mistaken, you had several students, Ms. Parker, that actually placed, and I noticed that there were other students from other schools who also placed in that competition, so kudos to them. And then their gymnasium, before they had their pep rally, they had all the clubs that were offered by that school, so you could walk through and see what opportunities were available to our students. And we're in, I'll just say this, that I know we're in the home stretch, we got two weeks left, and I know it's hard, but I certainly appreciate seeing as how we've honored teachers this past month, I appreciate that it truly does take a village when it comes to our children. So from the teachers, to the support staff, to transportation, to child nutrition, to maintenance, to central office, I appreciate everything, every contribution that is made by every individual, that they pour into our students, how they love our students, how they nurture our students, and how they teach our students. So thank you, thank you, thank you. With that, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, and that will be old business, and this will... Oh, let's see, I guess if I would put my glasses on, let me back up. Now, board members, you have a packet tonight that contains the, an evaluation for the superintendent. So tonight, I would like to set a date to have that completed, and then I've also tasked Mr. Tatham and Mr. Matthews with helping to get these back and tally, tally results. So, the, with the idea being that we will be able to have all of this information for our next board meeting, which will be at the end of June, June the 27th, if I'm not mistaken. So, if we set a date for two weeks, or the first week in June, would that be acceptable for you all to get that completed?
Yes.
Okay.
June 3rd.
Sounds great.
Is that Monday, June 3rd?
If that's what you want, then we can do Monday, June 3rd.
Is June 3rd on a Monday?
I don't know. I don't have my phone in front of me. It is, okay. All right, so June 3rd, is this an agreeable date? Okay, so we are going to, by June 3rd, you're going to have your, your evaluation completed, and Mr. Chapman, bring them back to you, what's gonna be the best thing?
That would be good.
Okay, so June the 3rd.
I don't think I'll be here that day.
Okay, oh, okay.
That's fine, though, I'll be here June 4th, and then Christie can collect.
Okay, all right. You good with that?
Yeah.
All right, great.
And they'll, they'll be sealed.
Yes. June the 3rd, if you can plan, to please plan to have your completed survey back to central office, and then Mr. Matthews and Mr. Tatham, we can set a date to go through that, once we have all of them back.
All right.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Tatham?
Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, so June the 3rd, mark it down, fantastic. Now, next item on the agenda, this will be old business, this will be concerning the Murphy Middle School bathrooms. So, you have them before you, you have the three options that we discussed in last month's meeting, so, because... Okay, I need a motion in a second for which option that we are going to go with.
I make a motion that we accept option number two, construct boy and girl restrooms off the eighth grade hallway, estimated cost three hundred thousand.
Okay, Mr. Ellis has made a motion, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Coleman, all right. Okay, Mr. Ellis, discussion?
Just out of the three, this one makes more sense in the long run, so.
All right, Mr. Coleman, any discussion?
Just, just for the record, so number three, if, sometimes you have to get back to reality, and I don't think that, at this time, even if we put number three up, I don't think we would be given an opportunity based on conversation, so that's why. Of course, I would rather go with three, because it's the better option, but more of a long-term option, but just because of reality, I think, number two.
Okay, fellow board members, discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, was the motion to, or option two?
Yes, to construct boy and girl restrooms off the eighth grade hallway, estimated cost of three hundred thousand dollars, option number two.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, discussion?
I just, I lean toward that option three, just, I know it's significantly more, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I think, in, in the, in long-term thinking about that, it's just, I think it's needed, we, we talked a, a lot about the need for, you know, changing rooms and things like that, and so, we're, we're not getting that, so.
I agree, I think option three, if you got, they do need dressing rooms, they need changing rooms, and if we're gonna do it, and I know money is the determining factor, as always, and we're probably not gonna get what we asked for, I realize that, but that would be the better option, and I think.
Sure.
And that, just, and I think we all know, but option three talks about extending the gym, which, and extend, or construct a 20 by 74-foot addition, which will contain restrooms, changing rooms, and a coach's office, so anyway, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Again, I think, looking at option two, definitely that's more palatable, as more as cost, but in, in the long-term, I just think it's, option three is really a better, better way to get it, so.
Right.
I don't know how you do this legally, but is there a way to send two options to the commissioner? Like, three, because I mean, I drew number three, so I definitely agree with number three, but like I said, per conversation, I don't know how that will go, but, and I've talked, I mean, you know, Dr. Woody talks today, too, and I agree with both of you, that by far is the best option. So I don't know if there's a way to give two options to them, and then if we get the lesser of the two, we still do something, and if we get the big one, then, yeah.
I'm just concerned that we run the risk of getting both of them turned down. That's what I'm concerned about. And so, I think we have the best chance with option number two, to at least get something out of the situation, and, but I don't know. Dr. Woody?
Well, I, I would have to agree right now, I mean, my recommendation would be to go with two, and if things move forward, then you already have two in place, and if that becomes a permanent use facility, then three would be something I would want to come back and, and make at that facility in the future. I mean, that, that would just be my recommendation.
If you send two, and one's seven fifty, and one's three hundred, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to tell you which one they're gonna pick.
It doesn't, but I...
They're gonna give it to those.
I'm afraid, I don't know.
I think, too, again, and I understand what you're saying, that how, when, when was Murphy Middle Dale, what year was that?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-seven, and so, was ninety-seven? So, so basically, for twenty-six years, twenty-seven years, after that, after that point, people said, wow, you know what, we should have had changing rooms in there.
Sure.
For twenty-seven years.
But Andrews Middle...
It's the same way.
Doesn't either.
Yes.
No, I, I know, I agree. Yeah, whoever designed those three buildings.
Okay, so, so what are we doing then? The, the motion that's on the floor is option number two, so we've got to... The, the motion that's on the floor is option number two, so we've got to, we've got to vote on that one. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may question?
Go ahead, Mr. Tatham.
For at least two board members who expressed interest for option three, that Mr. Coleman would prefer, but he said that for option two, I wonder if we could potentially, Mr. Coleman would like to vote on option three, if he could withdraw his motion and somebody could make motion three? Or if it just needs to be, if you would prefer three, vote no for this one, and see where it goes.
There's more comment with it, not to go into the huge thing I talk about all the time. If we do do some version of that consolidation stuff with the high school using the middle school, it would be, I think, chances of adding into that and getting it would be a whole lot more. And then as Dr. Woody said, it would be, if we could get this now, that solves a problem for now. And then if we do the phase two of that long-term project that I always talk about, then it would be really easy to put it in. Could be easier to do it then.
Okay. So you want to leave it on the floor? Okay.
Can I, one at a time? I think that, one, one thing, and I don't mind supporting option two, if that's, you know, but I think that, and of course, they'll know if they watch this, but can we definitely make the commissioners aware of, you know, this option three that we feel that would be beneficial, that we're trying to, you know, I guess, I don't know, be aware of the, the cost and so forth. And so that's why we're asking for option two. Does that make sense? I think that that's important for them to know that maybe we as a board, maybe not all of us, but at least part of us feel that, that option three in the long-term would be beneficial for our students. But we also recognize the consideration of cost.
Sure.
And so that's why we're saying option two. Because I think they need to understand that.
Well, I agree. So how do we do that? What do we do?
I don't know. Oh, yeah.
We just send us with, send us information? All right, okay, all right. So the motion is on the floor for option two. Is there any more discussion? No? Mr. Chapman, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Gaddis, how do you vote?
I'm second.
I think there was.
Yes, Mr. Coleman was the second. So Ellis was the motion, and Coleman was the second.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Mr. Chapman?
Mrs. Gaddis?
I don't want option two, because I think we need option three. We're going to do it. We need to do it right. I'm going to put it in.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Tatham?
Aye.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is under new business. So Andrews Middle School Roof Project. Okay. Do I need to go before you?
No.
All right, so at this time, do I have a motion authorizing the superintendent to accept the bid recommendation from REI Engineers for the Andrews Middle School Roof Project? And the superintendent will inform the board of the company awarded the contract. Mr. Coleman, make the motion.
Mr. Tatham, sorry, give me a second.
Mr., Mr. Tatham, you're, you're going to be my second on that.
Okay.
Okay, Coleman, any, any discussion? Mr. Tatham, any discussion? Okay, fellow board members, any discussion? Mr. Chapman, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coleman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Tatham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gaddis? And Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
All right, moving right along. That brings us to the announcement of our next school board meeting. Like I said, this time it will be on Thursday, June the 27th, at 10:00 a.m. This is to, I know this is a little bit different, but this is to accommodate a potential budget that we might have. So we're, we're trying to be accommodating as possible with time. So we've moved the meeting from our third, third Thursday to the end of the month. So June 27th at 10:00 a.m. here at central office. All right, next item on the agenda will be final comments. Mr. Tatham, do you have any final comments tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, just to double thank, I would like to say a personal, long gratulation to all our employees that were recognized tonight. Thank you for all your hard work. I'd also like to say that after having our budget meeting with commissioners, they expressed and continued interest to work with us to set a date to discuss facilities that we, we try to arrive at a date that's agreeable for everybody as soon as we can. And I'd also like to say, for those that aren't aware, there are some major Biden administration concerning Title IX regulations. And those are set to take effect August 1st, I believe. I think there's several states, about 20-something states, that are suing the Biden administration over that. North Carolina is not one of those states, but I think those states might delay that. But, but it would be nice for us as a board and for the public if moving forward in our next few meetings that we get updates on that situation.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Tatham. Ms. Gaddis, final comments? Mr. Ellis, final comments?
Yeah, so Saturday night, I was, I got a text message from a, a business here in Andrews, a friend of mine. And he just sent me a Facebook post, and I didn't know if I was going to say anything about this, but it was, it was, an individual said something about Cherokee County School System at Central Office. And just, it was about 5% truth, about 95% false, right? But the rest of Facebook didn't know that. So I tracked all the information down, and it was all wrong, except for just a couple little tidbits. So for the general public, if you have questions, if you have concerns, if you, if you think you know something, reach out to somebody here on the board and ask questions before you post something to the entire community that is absolutely false. It, it's an uphill battle. So there was a comment about money made. We all spend a ton of time here. We care about Cherokee County school system. And we make $200 a month. This election, one person's running for, I guess, three seats. So if it's that important, run for office. Sit in one of these chairs, make decisions based on the entire county. Otherwise, please do not post this absolutely falsehoods on behalf of the rest of the community, because it does nobody any good.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Matthews, final comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say, of course, we just finished recognizing all the educators for Teacher Appreciation Week. And I would just like to commend each one for their dedication and what they do from day to day. And I think, again, everybody involved in education. And I won't name everybody, because there's a lot of people involved. I would also say, and please don't make a comment on Facebook about this either, but you made the right choice in the principal of the year. I mean, I have you on that. And of course, I've been retired, been at home for the past year. And, you know, my wife is, I don't know what time she gets up, but I don't hear her. But she leaves for work about anywhere from five, excuse me, 6:20 to 6:25. And of course, we live about two miles from the school, so. And then she, in the past, I think she's doing a little better, but in the past, she would be at work until about 5:30 every single day. So anyway, and we have a lot of dedicated educators that, that do some of those same things. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, comments?
Sure, so just same thing, just thanking all the teachers. And I know, like, the majority of the reason why I ran was for certain things and the facilities and things. But another one, my wife's a teacher. She's been a teacher for, I ain't said it, because I have to be something a long time. And my, one of my sons is a teacher. And undoubtedly, the most underpaid, overworked calling that a human could ever have. And I promise you, I know all that's up here, you know, it's, it's a constant thing trying to figure out a way to get you more money or get you more benefits or something. And, and just know that if it was up to us and not the state, you would all be really wealthy people. But we have a little issue in Raleigh. But just keep doing it, you know? I know it can be a struggle, but just know that those kids, they appreciate it in attitude.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, final comments?
I have nothing.
Okay, Dr. Woody, final comments?
Again, I just want to say thank you for all of our staff, the support staff. We couldn't do without them, the teachers, the principals. Again, you have very difficult jobs, and you are appreciated in what you do.
All right, that just leads to me, and I'm going to reiterate it. I can't say enough. I do count it a privilege to serve on this board. And undoubtedly, there are times that are harder than others. But, but I very much enjoy it. I'm very grateful for all of you. So with that being said, do I have a motion in a second? Motion by Mr. Coleman, second by Mr. Ellis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting adjourned.